And we're ready whenever you are, Mayor.
Good evening and thanks for remotely attending tonight's city council meeting. The camera in the council chamber is set up to show those attending in person tonight. The platform we're using has a raise hand feature. You will notice a picture of a hand in the upper right-hand corner. When we reach into the meeting where the public has the opportunity to address council, you can click that button and be given your opportunity to address council. Please stand for a quick reading.
Mayor Scowley.
Here.
Councillor Duffa.
Here.
Councillor Fisher.
Here.
Councillor Kennedy.
Here.
Councillor Powers.
Here.
Councillor Reisch.
Here.
Councillor Scampaly.
Here.
Corn present.
We have two presentations tonight. The first presentation will be from Recreation Director Mackenzie Cole regarding summer camp review and survey results.
It's actually going to be given by me. It's a small change in the agenda. Good evening, Mayor and Council. On behalf of Mackenzie, I'm just gonna run through her brief report on the summer camps and the skate park survey results as we know them to date. I did provide you each with a copy of the memo that Mackenzie provided, which is a brief overview of the summer camp attendance and the results of the survey. Generally speaking, the camps received positive feedback from those that took the survey. There were 30 participants that completed the survey for children that participated in the camps. Next year, one of the questions was about what types of camps people would like to see next year that were not offered. This list of camps includes soccer, gymnastics, softball, lacrosse, cheerleading, track and field, basketball, baseball, and hockey. Those have been the camps that we have offered for the last several years. So we did ask what people would like to see in future years. And we have adjusted our budget to include volleyball and an arts camp, an arts and crafts camp that we're hoping to partner with the Remington Art Museum in 2022 in response to the survey results. Does anybody have any questions on the camps or where we're going with that for next year?
Where it says number of participants, does that mean... Is that how many actually participated in those this year or is that...
Oh, yeah, that's the number of participants in the camp that took the survey. Sorry.
That took the survey.
Yep. So, one parent, presumably her guardian, had a child that participated in the hockey camp. I can get you the full... Actually, let me... I think I have her notes on attendance if you're interested in attendance. No, I don't have the number of actual participants in the camps, but I can certainly get you that.
We had, I mean, just in the softball camp alone, we probably had between 30 and 35 kids broken up into two different timeframes. So we had a pretty good turnout for that.
We had excellent turnout in all of our camps. We established a 10-participant minimum. I think the lowest attendance camp was hockey and that had nine, but we still did offer the camp. But I will work with Mackenzie to provide you the breakdowns of the number of participants in each camp. That's the number of participants shown here, actually, people that took the survey.
I, you know, was wondering if this court has been refurbished. There used to be, you know, lessons there in pickleball. And I did see a lot of young people down there enjoying both of the courts. And also, I mean, because of the skateboard part, I had talked to a lot of people who initially were involved. And I just wonder, like, if we could give people who are very good at skateboarding to give some lessons and also tennis and also pickleball. I just, I'm a big believer in city rec. I've had grandchildren that really enjoyed it and I would like to continue to expand it.
Councillor Fisher, it's Kathy. We're getting a lot of background noise. The mayor was wondering if you could self-mute for us, please.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, anyone else?
Would kids be interested in pickleball?
I would. Coming home one night, it was kind of getting dark and I couldn't believe they actually were on the pickleball court and they actually went over to the tennis court. And I said, "You know, there's still an open court over there." And they're like, "No, we like this because it's a little bare for us to play." No, I was, couldn't believe their excitement for it. So, you know, it's an upcoming sport, but tennis, unfortunately, I think, in the condition of the tennis courts and we got away from doing instructions. You know, tennis is a great sport. Never very good at it, but I think it could come back.
It'd be nice to offer those and see if there was enough interest, something to think about.
And skateboard, you know, like, you know, a young person, you know, to have someone, like, the people that originally started the skateboard part, they have great skill. And, you know, I mean, they could get little pointers and maybe excel more. And another rec, and this one would be great for a winter rec, would be, we talked about it before, of hiring people who are banned. So our young people could go and actually play with them and learn how to put a band together themselves and learn how to participate in being playing together. Now, summers are a little difficult because these bands are all working. But if we did a little winter course at the Biskie Center, I think that could be really interesting. And to have, if you're gonna expand the city into the music festivals and things like that, we need these young people to progress and be able to have new bands in the future, for the future. So I think that could be very interesting. I mean, spending money on our young people is a good investment. Anyone else? And I think you have another presentation, correct?
Just a couple notes on the skate park. We did a survey that was posted to the public on September 14th and it was closed on October 4th. During that time, we received a total of 243 survey responses. The survey included multiple choice questions as well as questions that showcase the images in terms of the maps where potential skate park could be located. In general, most participants in this survey selected the Greenbelt area, which included multiple locations. And so, before we are really able to kind of take this to the next step, we're hoping... So we provided council with a full copy of the survey, the questions. It doesn't have all the maps that go with them, but the questions and the responses as well as all of the comments. So you can see and read those all in full. And so, we're asking for council's direction in terms of where council would like to see the skate park, if you want, if you can narrow it down. You know, so we are hoping that we'll have that level of feedback from council at the next meeting so that we can keep this project moving forward and get some planning and budgeting numbers together for council.
For me, my choice is over at our Regional Recreation Center because if we're fortunate enough to get the grant, the R.I. grant, we can do a state-of-the-art skateboard park, which will bring people from all over Tennessee right now. And then it would be in accommodation with all the other recreation that we would have there. So for me, that's kind of a way to see, you know, if we have some success and that would, and gives us the resources. Because it is $153,000 expenditure and to do a real state-of-the-art one. And so I'm kind of holding tight, thinking, "Well, let's see where that goes."
I'm gonna read the comments from the community a little bit more and see what they got to say. I'll try and be prepared for the next meeting.
Good turnout.
Yeah, it was a really great turnout. We're very happy for the feedback that we got. I think it will help council, you know, guide staff in terms of selecting the new location for a skate park.
I think it would be helpful for us if you could provide feedback, any of you, prior to the next meeting. I think what we'd like to do now is we've got community input. If we could look at your input as it relates to this. And then from there, I think staff can come to you and say, "Hey, based on what we got from the seven of you and what we got from the community, it kind of boils down to these three sites or four sites or, you know, whatever it is from there." That way, we're starting to hone it in just a little bit farther. So if you could just take a couple minutes and shoot us back, you know, kind of your thoughts, whatever. And again, not looking for the final, just I'd like to be able to hone it down from, you know, wherever. If we can just get down to the area potentially to look at and then say, "Okay, what are the sites in there?" And if we get closer, great, but I think we can move it along from there a little bit. I, no doubt, it was good responses. You know, some stuff short, but some people, you know, spend a lot of time talking about their thoughts on it. So I think it was, for a survey of this nature, there was good feedback. We're not gonna get better than this. You're not gonna get 10,000 responses.
No, but it was productive and it was exciting. And I think you have a second presentation regarding the former Diamond National Property, our street.
Yes. So, for those attending remotely, whether you're a member of the public or Councillor Fisher, you should be able to access the note slides that I have in the handouts. And I've provided council here in the chamber with a hard copy. So, at our last council meeting, I gave you a very high overview of the two proposals. Not of the proposals, but, you know, that we did receive two proposals and give you... I gave you an overview of the process that led to the response that we received on September 20th. Since September 20th, so I'm happy to tell you, we did receive two proposals. And I'm gonna tell you a little bit more about each of them tonight without getting into too much detail. One of the proposals is for a mixed-use development that would be fully developed over three to five years, over three phases, the first of which would be a marina followed by residential development. And the third and final phase would include a lodging and hospitality component. The second proposal is primarily, it's a residential development that uses a homeowners association model. And it would also include a private marina. The boat slips would be for the residents as well as guests of the residents. And that would be built out according to market conditions, so it could take place over a longer period of time. We had a video conference with each of the developers on October 5th and have received some of the follow-up material following that call from each of the developers. We are currently, we've requested 30 days to do our due diligence. We'll be looking at the consistency and compatibility of the proposals with the city's planning documents, specifically our Brownfield Opportunity Area Plan and our local waterfront revitalization plan. We'll be looking at the financing of both of the proposals and the structure of the ownership as well as the legal disposition of each of the two proposals. And then it is our goal to, as staff, bring you a recommendation at your November 8th meeting for selection of a preferred developer. The first proposal, which is the more mixed-use development, does suggest that a public-private partnership on infrastructure would help expedite the project, but it's not dependent on grants and public subsidies. And the proposal from developer number two does request an investment of infrastructure, specifically roads and sewer infrastructure upfront from the city. So we are looking at really two vastly different proposals. But we will be, we are in the process of kind of getting more details on both of them to bring to council again in early November. I'm happy to take any questions on where we're at with that at this point in time.
They both sound really good. This is what Augsburg's been waiting for for some time. And I'm very glad to see this interest, two great offers. The start to the change in revitalization of our city. Anyone else?
Absolutely.
And before I close this evening, I just also wanted to give you an update on 17 Main Street since we're pursuing the development of that site also through our Brownfield Opportunity Area Marketing Plan and effort right now. We do have a request for proposals that is available to the public right now. It was released to the public on October 5th and the due date for those responses is October 29th. This site is significantly different than the Diamond site, not only in sort of size and scale, but also in terms of what its reuse could be. So we did tailor the RFP so that it was a little bit more user-friendly. We developed an actual form that respondents will fill out with all of the information that we would need in order to make a recommendation upfront to council so that we can keep this process moving along, hopefully a little bit quicker for the council. Certainly, that the request for proposal and the required form for procurement is available online through augensburgwaterfront.com or you can get it through emailing me directly, which is asmith@augensburg.org. And so I'm just happy to let you all know that that's moving forward as well.
When you say presented to the public on October 5th, what is that?
We had a, I don't think it says presented to the public. We had a virtual public meeting, or we had a virtual meeting with the developers, not a public meeting. We had a steering committee.
17 Main Street.
Oh, the 17 Main Street was publicly released, it was available on the 5th. Is that what you're referring to? I'm sorry.
Yes. So, does that mean we took out a legal ad so that everybody's aware of it or...
We did not take out a legal ad.
No legal ad? I just, I need, so how did we communicate that it's available?
We utilized the public website that we're using for all of the sites. We emailed it directly to the two individuals that expressed an interest early on. So they received it right off the bat, directly. We didn't wait for them to ask for it. We emailed it to them.
I'd feel a lot better if we spent a little bit of money and put in a legal ad so that, you know, everybody's aware of it. Like, I guarantee 99% of the public doesn't know about this waterfront website, right? I mean, certainly people outside the community don't know about it. So if you go through the process and you do a legal ad and maybe take out some display ads, you're marketing it and you're covering yourself too because you're saying, "Well, we placed a legal ad, you know, it was in the papers." So I'd feel better doing that.
We also did send an email out to the full list of 150 developers that were identified at the outset of our marketing campaign. And that email went out actually just this morning, alerting the development community that we reached out to for the Diamond site of this opportunity as well. So that did go out today to 150 developers that do work in New York, in northern New York, in this area, or do mixed-use development. So we also did that as well. I'm not saying that we shouldn't do legal ad. I just wanted to also let you know that that also did happen just this morning.
I understand what you're saying, John, and I don't disagree with you. But this specific property is adjacent to, and in proximity, of two local developers who have worked hard on the city. And they have, and they both have good and, you know, pending development for the city. So I really, I wouldn't want to see it go to anyone else but these two local developers in the sense that...
This gets back to the whole thing of like, is this a request for proposal or is this a setup?
I think we had, I think Councillor Reisch is right. We'll post that and I suspect tonight, since we're talking about it, we'll get some free publicity through the media. We'll move this along for us too so we can make sure people know.
I think it's a setup, John, because you have...
No, you just said you wouldn't want anybody but those two to get it.
Well, yeah.
I wouldn't have, you know, I like them both too, but that's the point of you wanting to request for proposals.
Well, for someone...
Request for proposal, the aspect of request for proposals, to send it out, to make it competitive for... Everybody. Our two local individuals, but also to broaden it out, to get the fair market value for it. To get the fair market value is very important. Might very well come out of... You have developers out of this area. Responsibility to the tax... That's what an RFP is.
If it's gonna stop another tremendous project going forward, that has to be considered. If these two developers...
Mike, it's not going to. It's just, you're just gonna get the word out that you have to be fair to everybody.
I want to be, Mike concerns Augsburg.
That's good.
I have a quick question on that from the first one. And I don't need to get into the details or anything, but the second proposal, the mixed residential, any timeframe possibly? I mean, I know they're kind of banking on us for the infrastructure. But was there any kind of a timeframe to get rolling or to break ground or anything of that nature?
Both proposals are looking at, you know, potentially breaking ground in 2022. But again, that proposal is really reliant on market conditions. It's a residential development, based on what we know now. You know, things change, but that was how it was originally presented. So it would start out fairly small and then as units sold, additional units would be built. So the infrastructure needs to be in first for that type of proposal. It could be built out in five years, it could be built out in 15 years, or it might not be built out in 15 years based on the market.
Thank you. I think just going to a little greater detail so council knows what the expectation is. So from here forward, so Andrea, from a technical perspective, Scott Goldie from Legal and Angela Gray from Financial, I've asked each of them to kind of do what, in their definition, what they think the first level of due diligence is. And then so from my perspective, so we're only looking at two proposals right now and I haven't to whittle this down from 10 or 15 or 20. We'll consider this, we're really negotiating with contractors. So as soon as we get that first level done, which I think will tell them if they want to be involved in us and us if we want to be involved with them, then my expectation is we'll schedule an executive-level briefing with council to hear from the attorney, the comptroller, and the city planner on each of the aspects. And then from that, you know, a recommendation to go to the next level, which will be another level of due diligence, obviously, that would be moving towards, you know, potentially the signing of some sort of a contract. So that's how I see that going. Again, that, and then once council's comfortable with, you know, where we're at and certainly a decision can be made about what we're discussing openly. But I think we will consider ourselves fairly quickly here, you know, in negotiations with two contractors. And so we'll want to, you know, preserve the sanctity of that only to the point where, you know, we're not giving up information, et cetera, et cetera, for either developer. So this is a, you know, this is a subjective process to a degree as we've talked about. So I think that's why it's important. We have a set of criteria. We've established the three areas that, you know, we'll look to quantitative and qualitative, you know, be able to provide you recommendations and advice. So again, I think it's technical, legal, and financial, the areas that you'll want to be in. So we're gonna do that and then come to you all and say, "Here's where we're at. You know, what do you want us to do, more or less, whatever?" And I think we'll be looking for kind of council to say, "Okay, we agree on a recommendation. This is the preferred developer at this point." And then we'll send the three of them back kind of for that next level of due diligence. And the developer as well, you know, then looking for a proposal. So if council's looking for something else or you've got some thoughts on that, now's the time for us to talk about it because that's how I see us going forward. Ultimately, you know, getting to you as soon as we can. Andrea's put out the date there. We've set kind of an outside marker of that council meeting, but certainly if things transpire sooner and we need to call the council together, certainly we'll ask to do that. We don't want to hold things up. But there's a lot. These proposals are significant. I guess in some ways you'd think, "Well, I wish we had more," but I think most of us know we're good to have two. But it's significant. Neither one of these are small proposals by any stretch. So a whole lot to consider as we get into the finer details.
And let's say we just got one proposal for 17 Main. Are we obligated to take their offer or can we negotiate the price?
No, certainly not. We can, I mean, the subjectability of this, again, is for us to be able to, you know, to state our terms and what works for us. So I think, again, we'll handle whether we get one or 10 on any of these properties in the same way. I just think now, again, so we've got to. But if we get one, I think the same thing, we can look at it, do that level of due diligence for the council to say, "Okay, we're comfortable with this." And now, you know, make a determination to take it to the second level. And same thing with these proposals. We don't, I don't want to see them do any more due diligence or work for something that doesn't, you know, continue to have their interest or something that they think they can bring to fruition. So...
Because we have a responsibility to the taxpayers, obviously, and to get the best price for the properties that we're marketing. And if we hadn't have gotten that second offer on Diamond, we would have had a very low offer and probably would have sold it way lower than the appraised or assessed value would be at. So it'd be better.
We don't have to take any, John, if we got one low-ball offer, the council just said, "No, we're, you know, it's not what we want. We're looking more of this or that." I think we can certainly negotiate, but council's not under any definitive obligation. I would say it's one thing that provides us a tad more flexibility. But I suppose even at auction, we would set a minimum price and say, "This is our minimum. We're not obligated, you know, to sell it below that." So, but I think this RFP process doesn't, you know, it allows you to have the ability to look at these things and say, "This is what we think is best for the city."
I think to have such great interest in our city from so many developers, I think we should be just...
One of the feedbacks we got from the consultant that Vida Nova were working with is that they felt like there were six or seven people that were serious, you know, really were serious about looking at Augsburg. And he said, "It's not unusual. They'll continue to look. Nobody necessarily, you know, there's... Everybody doesn't have necessarily the readiness to be first, you know." So, but he said, "The good news is, you know, they believe there's plenty of people watching this now and, you know, if we can light a fire with this first one, you know, the next one may be potentially greater." So...
First one will be the start, but there's a lot, there's a lot more land on the river. You know, we have Shade Roller, that cleaned up. The port has some incredible property. I'm sure they'll be interested in marketing that with the success of Diamond. And yeah. Thank you, Bill.
I like the notion of expediting the process for a developer that comes, giving them a timeframe to not sit on this property. Move it, get it on tax rules, get it rolling, get it working, sales taxes on it, whatever.
Yeah, the timeframe is as much for council as it is to give the developers assurance that we are moving this ahead and we're not, you know, trying to stymie it in any way. So, you know, being clear with them on what we need is also part of helping it move along expeditiously.
Is there a state or federal tax breaks or funding or any sort of incentive to, that the developers are gonna take advantage of, that we know of?
Well, whether or not there are, whether or not it could qualify for a pilot, for example, you know, depends on what the proposal is, what they actually develop. Some things are eligible and some things are not. Patrick Kelly, who is the Executive Director of the IDA, is a member of the steering committee. So has been engaged in this process from the beginning and, you know, intentionally so. We don't want these developers to miss out on opportunities, whether they're provided by the city of Augsburg or St. Lawrence County IDA or New York City or the federal government, for sure.
Good. Thank you, Ben.
Thank you. Everyone good?
Great job.
We have one public hearing today. And it is a public hearing regarding an ordinance to provide for the sale of city-owned property known as former Cherry, Paper's Cherry Street at the... at the public audience, and I will open that to public hearing now. If anyone attended remotely would like to speak regarding this public hearing, please use the raised hand feature.
I do not see any hands raised.
Then, I will declare this public hearing closed. And this brings us to public appearance. At this time, anyone attending remotely would like to address council, please use the raised hand feature.
The first individual is registered as Michael Thule, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears you are self-muted, sir. Mr. Thule, it appears you are self-muted.
How's that?
We can hear you, sir.
Good, thank you, good evening, my name is Michael Thule. I live at 214 Hamilton Street in Augsburg. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to city council this evening. One of the responsibilities of city council is an annual performance evaluation of the city manager. Section 6 of the current employment agreement between the city of Augsburg and Mr. Jelly states, as part of the employees' annual performance appraisal on or about December 15th, the city council at their sole discretion will consider a performance bonus based on a percentage of the employee's annual salary. In reflecting about this topic recently, I did a Google search on city managers, in the hope that I might find criteria by which a city manager is evaluated. My search took me to Wikipedia, and at that site, there's a reference for professional organization, the International City and County Management Association, its acronym ICMA. The site states, manager members of the ICMA are bound by a rather rigid and strongly enforced code of ethics that was originally est- established in 1924. There have been revisions to this code since 1924, the latest in 1998. While updates have taken into account the evolving duties, responsibilities, and expectations of the profession, the core dictate of the body of the code of ethics reads as follows. To integrity, public service, seek no favor, exemplary conduct in both personal and professional manners, respect the roles and responsibilities of elected officials, exercise the independence to do what is right, political neutrality, serve the public equitably and governing body members equally, keep the community informed about local government matters, and support and lead our employees. Reading this ICMA code of ethics, I would suggest to city council that there might be aspects of these ethics that merit a judgment of areas in need of improvement in Mr. Jelly's job performance. Specifically, I think the sections that read political neutrality, and serve the public equitably, and governing body members equally, are such ethical areas in need of improvement. The city manager has often made comments referencing majority city council and minority city council, and publicly has often praised Mayor Skelly in what I believe are political opinions. In social media and in public statements, the city manager often describes citizens who offer opinions that differ from his as disruptors. In my opinion, making such statements, Mr. Jelly acts as an eighth city councillor and not an apolitical city manager. I think city administration and our elected officials should welcome citizen input on important city issues, even when this input runs contrary to their individual opinions on the issue. There is no need to identify as disruptors citizens offering views on city manage, on city matters. A professional administrator or a responsible elected official should take the time to listen to any citizen input, thank the citizen for offering it, and if there's disagreement, take the time to explain why. Sadly, this has not been the treatment given to some citizens, either have spoken publicly to city council or offered comment on social media. I note in former city manager Sarah Purdy's contract, provision for the city is ready for her annual membership in the International City County Management Association, and that there is no such provision in Mr. Jelly's employment agreement. If not a member, I encourage city council to pay for Mr. Jelly's membership in ICMA, and take advantage of any in-service education your organization offers to help Mr. Jelly improve ethical areas in need of improvement. If Mr. Jelly hopes to have a long-term career as our city manager, it seems such opportunity might improve if he takes a more neutral position in city politics, and begins to treat all citizens and all city councillors with respect. Ultimately, this is an issue that falls on city council to deal with. I will give you credit or hold you accountable depending on any change in conduct by the city manager in city affairs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. I saw a lot of those imperfections in our previous city manager, Sarah Purdy. City manager Steve Jelly is in a bit of a dilemma, he is also our acting fire chief, and is responsible for public safety, so when he does see issues with public safety with council, he, he is obligated to speak up, so that people are not in fear of their lives when told they are. Thank you. Next, Kathy?
The next individual is registered as Doug Loffler, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears you are self-muted, sir.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Good evening. I'm calling in tonight to address the seven-member council as a whole. I'm not signaling out the majority or the minority. This is addressed to you seven people sitting at that table tonight. As most of you are aware, Facebook has become this administration's chosen political battleground this election season. As with most things socially media-driven, the good-spirited nature of debate this time of year brings has taken a drastic turn for the worse. A turn that has quickly devolved into mean-spirited personal attacks, further dividing our already divided city. Recently, some members of this administration have labeled concerned citizens the following. Sore-ass losers, a plague on society, lawyers, a patsy, a know-it-all crowd that doesn't know anything, disgruntled retirees, accusing people of all having the same fiction teacher at OFA, and of course, the fan favorite, local government disruptors. These are just a few examples of the numerous instances of name-calling and downright denigration that have been shared by members of this administration. Is this truly how this seven-person group believes our city should be led? Is this an accurate depiction of how you feel about us as citizens, business owners, and former employees? This type of behavior is not totally callous and rude, it is incredibly unprofessional way to govern. I don't think it is necessary to give the names or accounts of who posted these bullying, dismissive, divisive comments. Those who have truly paid attention to city politics, even prior to the 2019 election, realize who continues to sink to such unprofessional levels to achieve their agenda. At a recent meeting, a highly-paid employee of the city was requested by his bosses to put together data regarding expenditures on a failed project. The report they requested was not available for them in presentation form at the meeting. The employee stated he did not have time to prepare it. However, there are hours of timestamp posting comments from this employee all over Facebook the week leading up to the meeting. Has arguing and demeaning citizens on social media really taken precedence over a direct order from supervisors? Or does this constitute insubordination? So once again, I ask the council as a whole, are you complicit with this type of social media interaction by the highest-paid employee of our city? Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, I'm, I'm glad to see you're talking to us as a whole, that's not the usual for you. And, uh, and also, if you want to go into that, the, you know, bad behavior, threatening myself after a city council meeting that you were going to get me, or, or, uh, going after a, a grandmother with her granddaughter in a parking lot.
Mayor, can we please keep this based on city council business, please?
Oh, please, don't interrupt me, now let you talk. Uh, so there, there is bad behavior everywhere, and I think you're very aware of that, Doug, thank you. Anyone, oh, do you want to talk, Nicole?
Yeah, can we just keep this city business-related? We don't need the, the comments and innuendos, we just need to stick to the agenda and continue, please, thank you.
I, I'm kind, I'm kind of curious here, I mean, you know, typically when residents are here and they address council, there's no back-and-forth dialogue here, why, why has that changed? Are we changing the format of the meeting and going back and forth?
Councilor Scamperelli stormed out of here because I didn't answer his dog's question one time.
He's a sitting legislator, that, that's one aspect, but, I mean, if we're not going to engage with the public, and you're, you're on the record numerous times stating that we're not going to be creating a Q and A here, and we're all pretty much in agreement with it, so when, 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 is, is this at your consideration whenever you feel the need to be able to respond to a, to a citizen? Or is this open dialogue for all?
I think, I, I think it'd be a lot better if, uh.
I just like to say, council power, you, I told you when you said on the monitor, you were, you said I was selective, and I said you can, you can interject any time of the comment, all of these guys, so anyways, please.
I'm just curious, I mean, are we changing the format of the meetings here? I, I, I mean, is it going to be one way one day and another way another? That's, I, I guess that's, that's just my concern.
I agree, let the people talk, let's not comment.
It may be, so is this your discretion?
I agree.
So when, whenever, whenever it opens up, we're all able to, to chime in? Okay, fair enough. Fair enough. So when anybody responds, it's open forum?
Right.
Correct?
I agree.
Thank you. Good enough, I'm down with that.
The next individual is registered as Margaret Hagerty, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears your line is open. Ms. Hagerty, it appears your line is open. Mayor, would you like me to move on and then circle back?
Then go back.
Okay, I will. The next individual is registered as Valerie Sovee, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears you are self-muted.
Can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Valerie Sovee, I live at 930 Hasbrook Street, and I appreciate the opportunity to address the council this evening. And in, in reference to the subject that I'm going to address, I'd like to just say that I did not go to school at OFA. However, it has been quite some time since I've called in to speak at a council meeting, because quite frankly, many statements from citizens seem to be falling on deaf ears lately where this council is concerned. I am following with interest many different social media groups and recent posts on social media, which I find very concerning. Similar to some of the issues that Mr. Thule brought forth earlier, specifically, I'm referring to posts made where various citizens have been characterized by city officials on social media as government disruptors. Recently, I read numerous social media posts by one city official in particular, which repeatedly asked certain individuals to enumerate what they have done to contribute to a better Augsburg, and that is a direct quote. I think, uh, what I perceived as the sarcasm of that comment was duly noted, but I thought it was rather unnecessary. I would like to make a somewhat presumptuous attempt to answer that question, it was asked on a public Facebook page, and I think it deserves an answer. First and foremost, many of the people who are being characterized on Facebook as disruptors are longtime residents of Augsburg, some of them have lived there all their lives, and as such, there are many ways that they have contributed to a better Augsburg. Some are advocates, whether it be for the elderly, for those with mental health and addiction issues, suicide awareness, and for public services that we all agree are essential to our community. Many are business owners, employers, who provide goods, services, and jobs, and grow the tax revenue that our city budget relies on. There are coaches who mentor our youth and stress values such as sportsmanship, integrity, and teamwork. Churchgoers, members of civic service organizations, and service organizations that do things like providing outreach to veterans, stocking, staffing, and supporting local food pantries, and promoting fellowship in our community. Many are employees who spend their wages supporting local businesses, and whether they be at public or private sector employees, their purchases drive our local economy. There are teachers, bankers, builders, lawyers, machinists, mechanics, public servants and volunteers, and last but not least, taxpayers. In short, all of these individuals, whether you agree with their political opinions or not, do and continue to work for the betterment of Augsburg every single day. With that being said, I would ask that the council schedule a meeting sometime soon as a whole, to review the city's social media and internet use policy. As Mr. Thule pointed out, I think there are definitely some points of concern with people who should be remaining impartial in this process, who don't seem to be doing that. It has been, excuse me, become very apparent that political opinions in our city vary widely and are an emotional topic. Many spur-of-the-moment responses in discussions on social media have resulted in poor conduct from both sides. People say things in the heat of the moment that they may later regret, or that could have been phrased in a much better way. This entire process of conducting city business on social media is hurting our community, and I believe that city officials and this council as a whole must be held to a higher standard and must take action to remedy this problem. Please, be better, do better, take the high road. I would encourage this council to see if you can manage to find polite and constructive ways to express your opinions, or better yet, please feel free to schedule a debate, as many citizens have asked, for the incoming city council candidates to express their views. There are quite a few people who have pointed out that facts are, some things being said on, on Facebook are opinions, and other are fact. Facts tend to be self-evident, and usually don't need to be spoon-fed to people, please keep that in mind, thank you very much.
The next individual is registered as Margaret Hagerty, and I will unmute that individual now, it appears your line is open.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good, okay. First of all, a shout-out to all who feel voiceless, defenseless, and alone because of bullying, I pray that you know you're not alone. Steve, Mike, John, Mike, Dan, Nicole, Bill, all of you have heard from me individually and collectively. Thank you to Mike, Dan, and Nicole for faithfully responding to me, including this last time when I specifically said I wanted to hear back. I'm left to believe that if the matter isn't addressed tonight, that the rest of you are complicit in the bullying behavior that is being displayed towards your constituents and electorate. Presently, I'm speaking for myself. Bullying and cyberbullying are taking place from the pulpit. It continues unchecked in spite of me writing to the bosses of the bully and hearing, seeing nothing to address it. I had hoped that by seeing the email to Letitia James, the Attorney General, and then her advising me to file a formal complaint with the Public Integrity Bureau, that you would see how serious it is. I do find it sad that I had to go out of this council because nothing was done within it. Perhaps you know that I've been sharing what I'm learning about bullying and cyberbullying on Facebook. All 50 states have anti-bullying laws in place, and most also have laws to prevent cyberbullying. The effects of cyberbullying are swift, far-reaching, and long-lasting. Sometimes even tragic, sometimes tragically, they're permanent with lives lost, businesses damaged, reputations destroyed, and families broken beyond repair. It can cause decreased self-esteem, emotional distress, physical symptoms, depression, anxiety, suicidal thoughts, and actions. Unchecked, this is the legacy this administration is leaving to the city. The legacy this administration is, this, the history of your families goes much deeper than even that of mine. Is this a type of behavior that you think reflects our city? Does it reflect your family? It certainly reflects on them. Yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know how to. It certainly reflects on them. Does this represent who you really are? Is this example you want to set for your children and grandchildren? You can stop it now. Once again, I call for the immediate termination of the perpetrator, Steven Jelly, city manager. Once again, I call for the immediate termination of the perpetrator, Stephen Jolly, City Manager.
Do you want me to cut? Okay.
Who's next?
I do not see any other hands raised.
And this brings us to correspondence. Do we have any correspondence?
We do not.
Next, we have our consent agenda. The decline is enumerated in General Fund Warrant Number 17-2021 to the amount of $720,717.63 and Library Award Warrant Number 17-2021 in the amount of $8,897.54. The Capital Fund Warrant Number 17-2021 in the amount of $0. And Community Development Fund Warrant Number 17-2021 in the amount of $75.98. And Community Renewal Fund Warrant Number 17-2021 in the amount of $0. As audited, these and the same hereby are ordered paid. I so move.
I'll second that.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
I just have one quick question here regarding the consent agenda. It has nothing to do with... Just at the bottom of the page is what we get every other week for these. It says one of 13, one of 18, one of five. What are we missing out of this? Is a lot of it just additional... I mean, it appears that there'd be a handful of pages that are missing here, and I'm just curious as to what they may be. Could be just nothing, I don't know. Could be, or it is. Can we see the summaries? I know it's a lot, but...
Why don't we go...
Pardon? Well, yeah.
Well, we should have a consensus on something that's that much work.
Well, let's say this. Let's print them all and bring it. That way, you see it once, and then you'll know if it's something that you feel like you want or not. I mean, if you've never seen the whole run-up, it's a lot, but let's just do it.
Yeah, myself as well. I'm not looking to kill any trees here.
Yeah, that way, you'll see it, and you'll know what it is, and then we'll send the full report on this one so you see what it is.
Could be a one-and-done, just for informational purposes. Thank you.
So, a couple of questions. I asked for, and maybe we can get it soon, an update as to attorneys, legal fees total. Shouldn't be too much. I know budget time's coming here. We're going to have to look at legal services, what we've expended in years past, and this year. I think it's important. Then I had a couple of questions specifically. I'm wondering what Oki Court Systems Incorporated is. It's a $30,000 bill.
The resurfacing of the tennis and now pickleball courts.
Oh. Gotcha. $30,000. We had citizens contribute to that.
Yes, sir. I can provide you the detail. On the first one, too, you'll have that one this week. We were keeping that right up until the previous deputy clerk left, kind of month by month, so we'll have that caught up. And that same book that we were keeping will be available for council at any point in time, which shows all the breakouts.
Snyder and Smith, is that a new attorney?
No, sir. That is the legal firm that represented Mr. Skelly and the detailed settlement. We discussed the returned tax amounts that were agreed were sent back to that stuff.
I looked on past budgets and refurbishing the tennis courts had been put in there several years and then taken out because of no money. So, it was in there actually, even the very core, and then not done. So, money has been allocated.
This, that 30K includes both the green belt and the over by Lockwood, correct?
No, sir. No, we just...
The resurfacing that was done over there is not part of this?
Over at Lockwood was paid by an individual.
Southworth Milton Incorporated, 43 grand. Is that a piece of equipment or something?
New roller.
Oh, okay, good. So, Chip's money covered that. Excellent.
Congratulations on that new equipment. You guys deserve that.
All right, that's it for me.
Everyone's done. And so this brings us to...
Mayor, I have to do a roll call, please. Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach? Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Approved.
So this brings us to items for council action. Our first item of business will be read by Director of Planning and Development.
It's an ordinance to provide for sale at city-owned property at public auction. An ordinance to offer city-owned property for sale at public auction, be it ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Augsburg, New York, as follows. Section 1. The following property shall be offered at sale at public auction by the City of Augsburg. Tax map to be determined. Location: Former Cherry Street. Minimum purchase price: $2,500. Restrictions subject to an easement. Section 2. The city does not guarantee clear title in the transfer of property by auction, and conveyance will be made via quitclaim deed. The City Council reserves the right to reject any or all bids or to withdraw any parcel from sale. Section 3. This ordinance shall become effective 10 days after publication.
I'll move that.
Second.
Sorry, I have a question. What is the anticipated cost of the easement? Things like that.
The survey is $800, which was done, and then the easement is typically a couple other... It's probably going to be maybe $500.
So, about $1,300, maybe, give or take.
Correct.
Roughly. So, shouldn't we add that on to the $2,500 for the property?
That, really what the city tries to do in establishing the minimum purchase price is to cover our costs. So, that covers the cost of the survey, the easement, and staff time to prepare the deed and the transfer documents, the RP and the TP forms that are required for the county.
Okay.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will also be read by Director of Planning and Development, Jamie Smith.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into contract with J.E. Sheehan Contracting Corporation for the installation of a new 8-inch waterline, request for bids number 2021-004. Whereas the City of Augsburg solicited bids to install a new 8-inch waterline to service the former Diamond National site within the city's designated Brownfield Opportunity Area. And whereas J.E. Sheehan of Potsdam, New York, has proven their capacity and ability to perform the work to the city's satisfaction. Now therefore be it resolved that the city manager or his designee is authorized to enter into a contract with J.E. Sheehan Contracting Corporation for a sum not to exceed $251,850 for the St. Lawrence Shores Water Main Project. And be it further resolved that the expenses for this project will be charged to Capital Project H8097.518, consisting of the following sources: Northern Border Regional Commission Grant Number 14 GNY00001, which is 56% of project costs, and State Municipal Facilities Grant Number 1921, which will cover 44% of project costs.
I'll make a motion for that.
Second.
The discussion, I just want to say this is great. This is the start. I believe the community, if you're going to have development in areas, you have an obligation to bring those essentials down, water and sewer. But this is all a grant, and I think we need to be commended on this. I mean, and all the other grants that you bring forward and your effort last Friday with the DRI was outstanding. Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Thank you very much, Andrew. We're Carter. We've been doing it for a long time.
Thank you. Well, it's a collaborative effort, for sure.
Kathy, would you call the roll, please?
Counselor Reach?
Yes.
Counselor Scamperly?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dillaba?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Approved.
Our next item of business will be read by City Manager, Stephen Jolly.
A resolution supporting the continued operation of the Augsburg and Governor of New York State Correctional Facilities.
I'll move it.
I'll second that. I'm glad to see it. I'm very glad to see it. We'll just make them aware of our importance of these prisons and, you know, just letting them know that it's on our minds and we're glad that we're sharing that.
What communications have we had with Governor or Mayor? Excuse me? Resolution?
The mayor's predominantly had the communication, Counselor Powers, with the governor or mayor. I have not had any. I did want to say, in relation to social media contact, I did have three individuals contact me and express concern about, is this the right time? This resolution was requested to be prepared by members of council, so I don't feel like I have an opinion at this point on timing. So, I guess for my only input was to say, again, it's outside of the hits I'm taking tonight for the negative parts of social media. There's a lot of good things that come from that, and one of them was people inquiring, is this the right time? Some people saying it is the right time. Some people saying, what are we doing to... You know, what else are we doing? Letters are nice, and writing to the governor is good, but what are we doing? So, I thought this was a good opportunity to have some discussion, not just on this, do we send a letter or not? But, you know, is there more that we should be doing? You all have history with what we did the last time that we felt like our facilities were being threatened by the state administration. So, I'd just like to defer to whatever direction the city council wants us to take.
The last resolution, I think, was March of 2020, so...
21. We did one this year. We did one this year. We did one in 2020.
I don't think there was one this year. There was one in 2020.
You wrote it.
I think it was put it off.
No, we didn't put it off. We passed the initial resolution. When the county passed their resolution, the IDA passed their resolution.
I can check again, Counselor Powers. I do think the last one we passed was 2020. I do, there was some discussion about it. I can't remember specifically, I have to reference the minutes, but there was some discussion.
Regardless, I mean, I obviously support this. And my question is, we're talking about the village of Governor here. And with that being said, what communication have we had with Ron McDougall or the town board of Governor?
I speak to Mayor McDougall. Very happy to see that we've established nice friendship. And he's very concerned, and we've talked many times about the prisons and also recently at the conference of mayor, so...
Fully understood. I spoke with Mayor McDougall about 5 o'clock this afternoon, and I know his position. I'm not going to state it publicly. I know that he will now. But with that said, I'm just curious why we're doing what Governor Village should be doing on their own, in which I'm sure, knowing Mr. McDougall and his political savvy, he's quite familiar with the operations in which he needs to operate. But all moving aside, let's move this resolution, get it approved and send down to the state dignitaries.
Yeah, this is the same resolution that was forwarded by the IDA and Governor in Augsburg the last time. I think that's why it's written this way.
It is, and I'll say again, Counselor Powers, it may have been, it's on me. I did pull out the last one. It was in there. It seemed to me that we had intent or reason last time. So, again, I put this for discussion. I wasn't... There was no intent for me to be committing the mayor or the council. It was what we did last time. I know the previous time, there was a very coordinated effort. So, again, to me, it was good that I thought we have discussions so we know exactly what we're doing and where. I think some of the comments I got from people, again, were, again, you know, is the timing right? There were questions. It wasn't anyone saying, don't do this. Actually, I did have one who said, pretty emphatically, they did not think it was the right time. It would only potentially call to attention a matter that maybe should be left alone. I mean, I know there's a lot of ways of looking at this. We talked about it a couple of months ago, and we had some pretty heated discussion from some people in the crowd who were concerned about, you know, what way to go. So, I don't know what the answer is. Again, that's why I was... Again, I think it's good discussion for the council to say this is what we're committed to doing. This council should be committed to whatever we do on this front. There's no doubt about it.
How do people know you're concerned if you don't articulate it to them? If you don't let them know the importance?
I'm pretty confident that we moved this this year and last year.
So...
But listen, all that aside, you know, let's move it.
The paragraph that says, whereas on the second page, talks about 150 jobs due to closure of one entire facility for a major local business. I assume that refers to United Helpers?
Yes, sir.
Wasn't that 200 jobs? I mean, it was pretty clear in all the news stories that it was 200.
I can inject, sir. What I'm trying to reference there is the jobs that were actually lost. I know they've done a lot of moving people, so the number of people that lost jobs versus replaced, etc. Again, what I didn't want to do was be overplaying our position, but I can check that again, just to...
And I think that's a very good point, if we just had a substantial job loss in our community and bring that forward. And I know that some of the counselors and I, we collected signatures a year ago. And, you know, maybe it made a difference, maybe it didn't. But I'm always proud of an effort, and gave a good effort, didn't we, John?
Yes, we did.
And I'll draft, I'll get the letter drafted this week and send it to everybody for review before it gets sent, it goes to the governor.
But the points that are important here is the loss of the 150 or 200 jobs that we recently suffered. I think it's a very good point that there's already a half a million square feet of empty abandoned buildings at the St. Lawrence Psychiatric Center, and these were repurposed psychiatric center buildings that were when we accepted the prison. And then the third is, is that, you know, given the socioeconomic conditions of Augsburg in the North Country, you know, the state should be, as part of their decision-making process, looking at a community's abilities to bounce back from these types of closures. And, you know, other communities have a lot of private sector jobs or even public sector, and we have very high unemployment, poverty, and that ought to be taken into consideration. I hope you'll reflect that in your letter.
I'll include everything that appears pertinent and let you all provide input. I will say, too, and maybe it's also part of the letter, again, certainly for the council's decision, but should we be inviting the governor to come? You know, here are our situation. We are the only city in the state's largest county. She certainly, you know, shown an interest in being in the North Country. So, you know, maybe it's time we offer an opportunity and get her here and just be able to tell all of our facts and figures. Again, I think this is the political side where I'm looking for the seven of you to tell me, what do you want me to do to facilitate communication with the governor's office? One is too much, one is too little, etc. And obviously, the partisan side here, you know, we've got to just take this... It doesn't matter. She's a new governor, and, you know, how do we tell her our story so she's aware of what's going on here and what we need and what we're doing?
With that being said, all I ask is to have the resolution, have another set of eyes on it, do some housekeeping on it, some spelling errors. More importantly, at the last, to be resolved, to send it to both committees. More importantly, at the last, to be resolved, to send it to both committees in the Senate and the Assembly, and Corrections, Crime, Victims, and, and both houses, in the Senate and the Assembly, and to include local governments and tourism as well.
Okay.
Kathy, would you call the role, please?
Counselor Scampely?
Yes.
Mayor Skelly?
Yes.
Counselor Dilibah?
Yes.
Counselor Fisher?
Yes.
Counselor Kennedy?
Yes.
Counselor Powers?
Yes.
Counselor Reese?
Yes.
Approved.
I also think it should be noted that we're requesting the state to save jobs in our local community. We should look at saving our own jobs as well.
And that brings us to old business. And we will begin with City Manager Stephen Jolly.
Counsel, I thought we'd do tonight, Angela Discovery, where we are now with the, with the ARPA funds. We've gotten a lot of interest, a lot of feedback. I think we provided you all the information, but I wanted her just to talk through the high points and get your feel for where we are so far, kind of tell you what we think the next step is to getting this into people's hands. I'll let Angela take it from there, then we'll follow up with questions.
Thank you. Good evening. Just as a follow-up from our September meeting, City Clerk's Office, along with the Councilor's Office, worked in tandem to solicit interest in the ARPA funding throughout the community. So the, was a significant amount of work done to notify not-for-profits and small businesses that the funding is available. There was a response form they could fill out, a Survey Monkey, and from that, we had about 50 responses and a cumulative request from those 50 responses of approximately $850,000. So included, attached to the memo is a detailed listing of those via not-for-profits and small businesses. Larger pull from small businesses, understandably, given the economic times. So we also have the ability in the city to retain some of this funding to recapture revenue that is deemed lost due to the COVID shutdown when comparing 2019 revenues over 2020 revenues. So I've also put together a schedule, just showing everywhere there's a negative where we lost revenue, the sum of those decreases totals about $57,000. So with that information, we are looking to get some direction from council of what we would like to do from this, with this money. We've received half the date, which is approximately $533,000. The recommendation that I would put forth is that the city retain $100,000 of the initial money received to offset our own lost revenue into our budgets, and that would be calculated based on the 2020 lost revenue that's known and an anticipated lost revenue of 2021. We're certainly eligible to keep more than that amount of money, but that's, I know I've believed that the direction of the council is to give back to the communities in some respect. So the second recommendation would be to take approximately $300,000 and distribute this out to not-for-profits and small businesses as a combined group, and then retain the remaining $135,000 to use in the future, whether it be for city projects or city support or individual support. The one thing that we would need to ask the applicants to do is to make a formal request of the city that is in line with the legislation to documentate, document the response to COVID. This is what the money has to be, or somehow COVID-related. And so in the early part of the pandemic, the government provided not-for-profits and small businesses with a tremendous amount of stimulus money. On the federal level, there's been money on the state level. And so one of the directions we would be looking for council is if they wish to provide additional stimulus money to not-for-profits and small businesses that have already received. Some of the more notable ones would be the Paycheck PPP program, Paycheck Protection Program, Economic Injury Disaster Loan and Grants went out to small businesses. There's just been a tremendous amount of money put into our communities from the federal and state governments. Some small businesses and not-for-profits weren't eligible for this money for different reasons, so there is a pocket of small businesses out there that have remained untouched by stimulus money. And so I would just be looking for direction from council of what you would like the next step to be in terms of this funding.
Certainly would be a good question to ask whether, you know, they would see the, and how much they've received through the other programs. It might not be a bad idea to stick up the amount of the request. Some of them seem very reasonable, and others are, well, they're significant, almost a tenth of the amount, so.
Correct.
I think our thought is, we are likely looking in the range of, some requests are as small as $1,500. I think we're looking in that range, up to, say, $10,000 perhaps, depending on the need, the potential loss suffered, and was, was any other form of assistance already provided. So I think we're looking at going back again with a very, very quick, this is a rapid process to get these very simple, are you interested, et cetera, et cetera, what you need, send it. It was quick. I think we're looking at an equally quick back with this after we talk with council that says, you know, three to five questions. Did you receive money? What was your loss? You know, what do you intend to do with the money? You know, very simple things which we can bring back, kind of screen out, and then come back to council and say, hey, here's, here's our recommendation of how to divide up this money. Just taking it one step at a time, the, you see, I think Counselor Scampely asked me for a breakout of the lost revenues, so there, that is what that is for 2020. And then anticipating this first dump would cover the losses of 2020 and potentially 2021, and then the next, we would get, the following year would cover two more years of potential lost revenue. We'd look to do the same thing with the second dump of money, is cover a couple of years of city lost revenue. I don't expect the revenue losses for 2021 at this point to be, you know, equal to or greater than what was in 2020. I think that's reflected in Angela's recommendation. And then not predicting the future at this point, what we'd be looking like in 2022 or 2023. So I think that's prudent. It's not, the city's not, the city's just, it's really, honestly, it's a small amount of money. I mean, quite frankly, it's, it's a small amount of money. So I think we're, we are definitely community first on this and looking to put, you know, the emphasis in, in the community first. I will say though, as you're all well aware, the city needs lots of money in lots of places. So I think that's why a screening, again, of have you received other funds? You know, what were your losses during this period of time, and what do you intend to do with the money? I think is important for council to look at, to determine if it's a higher priority than the cities, the needs that the city has.
What do you recommend for a maximum amount?
I would say Counselor Reese, as of right now, I would say the maximum is going to be somewhere in the 7,500 to $10,000 range. That would be my, if you, if you look at this and say, maybe just a third of these got some kind of significant assistance, that most likely the city would say, you know, you received some assistance. We're trying to target ours to people initially that, that didn't. I would say that's what we'd be looking at. I mean, it's, there's a close to 50 responses there. So again, if we were down to 25 or 30 people that were still eligible after we do an initial screen out, I think that would be, that would be prudent. I think any more than that with a $300,000 grant, unless we were just down to a handful. If we came back to you and said, listen, we screened out, and there's only about 10 people on here eligible, then it might be different. But I'd like to do this next level of screening based on this. I mean, again, I think this is a great response. I, again, I was not expecting us to get this kind of response. So I think it was a great response from businesses, but enough so that we'll need to do just one more level of, of screening to be able to come back to you and say, hey, here's where we see the greatest need, here's the next level of need, and here's where we may not be able to support.
Oh, accurate. Do you think the next level of screening?
Pretty, yeah. I mean, I, again, Counsel, again, I don't want to put people through a difficult process, but I think, you know, the state, did you get some, some sort of program that will be easily identifiable? Those are public funds. I mean, if someone chooses not to disclose it, we can likely find that out. And I think asking to demonstrate their loss, we could, as the other processes like PP or IDL, EIDL had done, you've got to demonstrate, you know, through your, through your tax documents that you, that you had a loss or some kind of verifiable document. And then after that, just discussing what you're going to do with the money. I think, again, we're, we certainly are just looking to help businesses ensure that they can continue and, you know, and improvement certainly is along the way, too. We're not, we're not, you know, ruling out, we're not looking just to help people for damage, obviously. I mean, there's, there's certainly good intent here, but like every other program, the need, the needs, you know, greater than what we have. And some of the requests were, you know, $100,000, you know, range. I mean, obviously, that's, again, but I think people put down, you know, what their needs are. I feel like everybody I've spoke to on this, and I spoke to a lot of these people, I mean, they're, they're hopeful for anything that any source can do to provide. So I know, I do know some of these applicants, a couple of these in here, it's been publicized that they received assistance. So I mean, I know there's, there's been some significant money already sent to some of these, but I, again, I don't find them, their application to be invalid because of that. I just think, again, I want to be able to tell council, as Angela said, that there were some that just, you know, were eligible, the processes, you know, may have seemed daunting, you know, et ceteras.
And we have a requirement, part of our due diligence, as far as accuracy goes, to report back to the federal government on a periodic basis. So we have to do our work as the city to ensure that we're meeting the federal guidelines and we're able to report how we determined the need on everything that we do. So it, there is a, an element of the application that we need to do to be able to.
Yeah. It's a limited amount of money. We wanted to go to where it'll be the most helpful. And now? Now we have the comprehensive.
Yeah. No, Mike. Excuse me.
Yes.
Did you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. I don't know. I think, I think the city should take, you know, the $100,000 towards their losses for the two years, but also I think we should, we should take $100,000 and put it towards the Main Street infrastructure for the pump station. We have some money going to it, we're getting close, and if we took 100, 100 off it this year and 100 off for next year, we'd have that pump station, which is going to help all the businesses over there.
That's a good point, because we can lower the sewer rate increase. Yeah, that would be beneficial to everyone.
Well, the $110,000 a month is coming pretty quick. So, you know, we're going to be paying for the 35, $40 million wastewater treatment plant coming up. So thank God we didn't tech the $5 million on earlier this year.
Yes, definitely.
So I think the third bullet, again, this, this allows us the ability to discuss that, and then if we don't expend all the 300 in here, that would also kick to the third area, and then we would come back to council and, you know, have further discussion about where to put the last block of money. I, again, I don't, this has all been much slower to come to us than was initially announced, but that shouldn't have fooled anybody. I mean, that's how they go. And then, and then without, nothing in the initial discussion said they were going to break the amount in half. So I mean, that, that also, we thought we were getting 1.1, and now it's, it's a half this year. Again, great, that's more money next year. So I, I'm just trying to keep this going because I think there's a lot of businesses and individuals that are anticipating potentially some support from here that may not, may have thought they were going to get something else, maybe they have now but weren't, because the Senator's Office and the Congressman's Office have been sending them to us. When they call, talking about needing assistance for their business and maybe not being covered at one program or another, they tell them, hey, the city got this money, and you should, you should be talking to them about, about getting some of it. So I'm just trying to keep it, keep it moving and get it out to the businesses. But Counselor Fisher's point was exactly what I was saying earlier. Certainly, the city could consume this entire 1.1 million dollars with a lot of our projects, not the least of which could be infrastructure. And as Angela, is this, as the money works through the system, it does seem like the reins have loosened from what was a very strict parameters we were given, largely lost revenue in infrastructure. But it, there's definitely some more leeway. So at the end of the day, we could probably consume this money without a lot of trouble in most any of our programs. But I think our goal from the get-go had been to send this money, you know, to the street where it can do the most immediate good. We won't have an opportunity, obviously, with any other funds like this to do that. It's very difficult with any of our other appropriated revenue. And so unless we're, again, looking for grants and partnership, it's very difficult for us to ever have access to funds where we can, you know, we can be directly impacting city, city business. So I believe we're on the right path. I know it's just nailing it down. This is not like any other process. It, there's, there's always a lot of, a lot of parameters, and as we develop it, something else pops up we have to consider and trying to do the greatest good and not, not upset people who, and make them feel like they were left behind by another level of governance.
You simply put real quick, I mean, it's a pretty good concept right from the jump, and some fine tuning, I think, with some of these numbers going forward could, could assist with some infrastructure issues and as well as taking care of our community and our small businesses and non-for-profits.
Yes, sir.
You know, some of these numbers are pretty high, and, but, you know, any, every little bit, it's going to help, right?
Sir. No doubt.
Okay. Our comprehensive development plan?
Just wanted to provide counsel an update. We finished some internal staff review. I'm working with the county now to, to get final comments back. I want to just let counsel, I'm going to send everyone the document again when I get back the comments from the county, so that you can look at them. Any comments the county sends us that we choose not to use would have to be overridden, the recommendations the county planning board makes with a super majority, five members of council. So I don't expect a lot of that, but I, I do, I will get that. I expect to have that back from, from the county sometime, hopefully this week or next. Staff has done not, not a lot of review on this, and I just want to be honest about that. We, we really have had a lot going on with the other projects, but I do think it's pertinent that we get this document in final form and adopted. One of the key factors of the document talks about an annual review that will be approved by council, that we have at least looked at the document, and we've made that document live and move with, with our city. So, but we will be, we will get that moving forward into council. Hopefully, it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting to review comments.
City Beach update?
Closed. Never opened.
Might have not drawn my line with the pen on that quick. I, no, I, again, I.
That's funny.
I will send counsel the detailed, the detailed breakout of the expenses. I, I didn't realize I didn't do that. I mean, it's not, I think we talked about the expenses. I don't think there's anything that isn't transparent there, but I will, I will send it, and we will, we will publish that on the website for everybody who wants to see exactly where and how the money was spent. But I, the only other, I guess the reason I did have this on here is we did meet with the, with the engineer team, and we're going to have a meeting with the state in the, in the not-too-distant future to, again, just review where we are now and what are the most prudent and pertinent actions we can take going forward so that we can, you know, continue to work our efforts towards opening City Beach. Again, I've given you all the data, you saw the testing results. I really, I continue to not be an optimist against all odds. I continue to be an optimist because I think that we will open the beach. We made a good run at it in a short period of time. There are just some, some obstacles and some hurdles we've got to, we've got to work through so that we can have a successful, continuously operating beach. Nobody wants an unsafe beach, not the least of which is the state of New York, who will have to issue us a permit. So I'll provide that, the ongoing cost of that. My projection right now will be some continued testing. I want to continue doing some testing a couple of times a month until the ice comes in, so that we've got, again, a good curve of testing and data, which to be able to report on the quality of the water, you know, over, over a long period of time.
Real quick with that, obviously, it'd be good if you had that, had that posted, the financials, the testing and everything up on the website prior to the 2020 budget talks.
Sir.
So as we're moving forward and discuss the budget next year, it'd be pretty important to have that information.
Does anyone have any old business?
Just, just a couple here. Anything back from Steve Button? We're getting property taxes, foreclosure memo that we sent over.
No, sir.
Nothing going forward, we're moving forward on that, and additional talks with the county EMS services. Where are we with that?
Nothing from our end at this point. I don't, I know that the legislator has appointed a committee. I don't, I know that, uh, the legislator has appointed a committee. I don't know that they even had their first meeting at council, but I can, I can follow up, but I don't, I don't know if anything. I, I know they've, they've appointed some members to committee. I don't know what the final number is or the makeup, but, uh, I can follow up and report back.
That's it. That's all I got.
Any, uh, any new business?
Um, I just have a couple things on. I know when, um, Kids Kingdom is eventually dismantled, there's a lot of people who have, um, boards up with like loved ones' names on them. Um, I just want to make sure that we have some type of system in place so when those are taken down, people have the opportunity to pick them up. I've had a lot of people calling and asking, um, if they can do it, they're made, um, people would like them. Um, another, um.
Hey, council, would the expectation be we wouldn't keep them and re, put them in the new?
No, they wanted to pick them up for themselves because they purchased them for, like, they're in, like, in remembrance or things like that, if you go down there. Like, I don't know if you bet in Kids Kingdom, but all the placards have people's names on them, different businesses. And, um, I know a lot of their loved ones are deceased and they would like them in remembrance and things like that. So they would like to actually, when they're dismantled, have the opportunity for a pickup or something like that.
Okay.
And then, um, I just want to say the fort project, if anybody hasn't been down to check out their new observation deck and the trails, it's, it looks awesome down there. I've been down a few days this week enjoying the nice weather and it's exceptional down there. So if anybody hasn't checked it out, they should. It's definitely awesome. And then what is going on with the ice or when we lost the ice? Can I get, we an update on that?
Uh, one of the electric components, uh, lost its fan over the weekend between Sunday night and yesterday afternoon. And the time we got to it, we couldn't find a part and it was three months out, but lawns actually did fix the fan. We got it back in and it's chilling again. Well, probably Thursday we'll start laying ice again.
Start from the beginning.
It's a variable speed drive. So once that overheated for no fan, they shut it down.
Yeah.
In the safe falls we have in there only for the compressor, not that component, so the lights might go off.
What's the anticipated loss of revenue?
I don't know the actual.
I know how much ice time we.
Yeah, I'm not sure the ice time, but Mackenzie's taking care of that, but I can, uh, email her tomorrow and have her get something to Steve.
Yeah, I'm just interested. I know that, I know Minor Hackey's been utilizing that quite a bit. I know there was a rock and skate over the weekend my kids attended, so.
Yep.
Thank goodness for Bernie Lot.
Yeah. I thought it was three to four months before we used to.
Yeah, that's crazy.
Amazing. Um, and this brings us to items for discussion. And we'll begin with city manager Steve Joey.
Uh, just a couple, uh, items from us, uh, just giving council notice will be, uh, I'll send, start sending out a range of some dates, uh, for some budget workshops. Um, uh, again, just hoping to get everybody synchronized on, on when and how we can do these the, uh, the best way. If there's any preference on time of day or whatever, I mean, again, just, uh, just let me know, but I'll, I'll send you out what I'm thinking, um, excuse me, before the week's over and then just look into, and similar last year, we'll try to group together, uh, some of the larger ones with a couple of the smaller ones. So I'm, I'm thinking three to four, uh, is what, what I would think for sessions. Try to limit to three, but perhaps we may have to go to four. Um, I'd like to dedicate, uh, one session discussion right to water and sewer. I just think there's a lot in both of those to talk about in grass, so really water and sewer is one, and then likely three to get through all the city departments. If we can do it with less, great, uh, but I think it's, it's important we, we do similar to what we did last year, give, uh, council an opportunity to to look at all the programs, ask questions and then be able to provide us with, uh, guidance where we're going.
Citywide assessment?
So, uh, again, also to be discussed in greater detail, um, during the, the budget time, but I did want to just, uh, talk about it a little bit tonight. Um, our recommendation from staff will be to do a city, uh, wide assessment, not to, uh, to try to do this in neighborhoods. I think, uh, for the longer time, obviously, our, our tax, uh, our assessable property values were, were pretty flat. Um, but now with the recent surge in sales, um, they're, they're certainly not flat, uh, under any circumstances. So I think for us to try to pick out a neighborhood or two on any given year is, is going to put us at a, a difficult place to set the tax rate. In other words, if our assessable value climbs significantly, we're going to want to adjust the tax rate to maintain the levy amount. But it's going to be difficult to do that if only part of the properties are at the higher value. So I think looking at doing the entire city at one time, uh, is, is the most prudent way for us to do this. Uh, it'll be, uh, about a part of a year and a half effort, won't be something that will be done quick. So we get started with it at the first of 2020, two, uh, the very first tax that it will impact will be the school taxes in the fall of 2023. So the first city tax will actually be in 2024. Um, we've been notified by the state, uh, that despite the sales, uh, our property equalization rate will be maintained at a hundred percent this year. That was good news. Um, but I don't, I don't think without the state having knowledge that we're doing this process, it will continue next year because the property values, there are lots of comparable sales now that will pique the state's interest, um, if we haven't been looking at assessments. I do think doing this, the state will, will, again, hopefully take a look at our equalization rate and leave us knowing that we're, we're doing the citywide for the next year. So, uh, I just, I didn't know if there's any, any thoughts about that. Uh, again, I know the neighborhood concept worked for many years. Uh, I just think right now, uh, based again on, on what we're seeing is pretty significant uh, numbers of sales and increases in property in the neighborhood of, you know, fifteen to twenty percent. But it's, it's going to be important that the city get looked at, uh, across, across the board at one time.
So if we do the citywide altogether, okay?
Yep.
Uh, and I, I think that's a, a wonderful thing, something that's needed. And would we go back to doing this, the six different neighborhoods?
I think we would look, uh, concert, we'd look for, to the contractor to tell us is, is, you know, what is the different demographics? Are there, are there still six significantly different demographics? My guess is the answer is going to be no, but I think we would look and have them tell us how they would group the city. Uh, would it be waterfront district? Would it just be residential? Would it be older residential, newer residential, waterfront, you know, et cetera? I think we'd look to them to help us kind of put out a map of how the city looks going forward, which would include a plan of how do we, you know, do revales? We, we certainly won't be able to wait, uh, if, if sales and property values increase at, at a, at an applicable rate that you'd like to see them every year. You won't be able to wait four or five, six years to do it. The state will adjust your equalization rate. We, we want to stay at a hundred percent. So, um, I think we'll look, look for, uh, for the experts. We've done a, we've done a, a market survey of, of companies that are, that are interested in doing this kind of work, uh, and a request for co-process, uh, two, we only got, we got two, but both, both credible, do it all over New York State. So I think, again, we'll look to, to see would it, would it be, you know, judged as six neighborhoods or wards? I, I would think, I would think not. I would think not.
I'd rather wait till 2024 myself. We had talked during the campaign about, you know, it was done every year, a third of the city, you know? Um, so we had talked about five-year, uh, revales, which would take us to the twenty four, which would put you out in an election cycle too that, you know, that's, or it's not partisan or anything, but that, that's my preference, but I don't know the details of that.
Well, this would, the first, uh, tax, uh, council recess would impact would be, uh, city, for the city, it would be in 2024, would, would be that. The school taxes in 2023, but it would be city 2024. I, I'm just afraid if we wait much longer, uh, I, I feel lucky that we didn't get hit this year without equalization rate dropping. There's been, there's been significant sales from the fall of last year to now. Um, I, I don't think we'll survive it again. I think if, if we don't, uh, show some progress that we're doing something, especially two years from now, I think our equalization rate, uh, will drop. And I, and I don't think that any good comes from that, from my perspective. I don't, it's, uh, it can impact everything from how they look at our aid, um, you know, et cetera, because it's kind of shown as a mark that you're not maintaining, you're trying to, to avoid. So the state just adjusts, uh, for that. So I, I, that's my only concern. Um, I think if we hadn't seen this recent increase in, um, if we hadn't seen this recent increase in, in real estate, it, it, maybe we could just continue to wait because we'd see our real estate. We, you know, we'd know things were flat. In fact, you know, this time last year, I think, well, maybe, maybe it was time two years ago, certainly is a concern that maybe real estate values were, were dropping, uh, or had dropped. So I think, you know, the good news was not there, but I, I, I think this is, uh, our, our equalization rate will drop. That's, that's for certain. Like I said, I, when the, when the report came in this year, the assessor and I both breathed a pretty big sigh of relief that they left us at a hundred percent equalization rate.
Two years ago, it was very different, pretty bleak, a lot of properties were for sale and they weren't selling, but, uh, I do worry about lower income citizens. I do worry how these, you know, it's a ways out, but this new assessment, I think, is going to, you know, put a real struggle on some of them financially.
So I had a, a, a meeting with the, uh, school superintendent last week and, um, one of the things we talked about was this, I, I, I will say again, I'm, I'm not a proponent and don't recommend to council that we continue to not take proactive action on assessable value. I, I think it is a North Country dilemma that we have been in for all too many years where we, we, uh, we try to artificially force down our property value because we cannot convince our elected officials to manage the tax rate. I, I think that's all this amounts to. So I, so I, I feel like it's, it is, it's not good for our city, it's not good for individuals to, to, to do things, when we all know things that occur, people decide, I won't fix up the outside of my house. I, you know, don't make your house look good, your assessment will go up. I, I just think none of those.
The office.
Yeah, I think right now those things are good, so I, I.
Better.
It is, I, but.
Value of your property and then we can lower its tax.
The logic, the logic is, is, is get your, get your tax rate down, not, not take what is most people's most valuable asset and, and try to artificially or hold down the value of that. I just don't think that's a good idea. So, but, but I'll say this, I talked to the superintendent because one of the things that will be key to all entities and we won't have any, uh, control, I don't think the county, the county's not going to adjust the county tax rate because property values are going up in Augsburg. Now, they certainly should be looking at adjusting the tax rate because property values are going up all across St. Lawrence County. And that'll be for us to, to do our part in petitioning the county to pay attention to that. Uh, but I, I did tell the superintendent, uh, he's got to be, uh, he's got to be watching this very closely with us because I think what, what the mayor's getting to here is, again, there's got to be the offsetting reduction in the tax rate to, uh, to offset the increase in property values. In other words, if our levy in the city is fifteen million dollars this year, that's what the city needs to hold, is the zero mark or the, the no raise mark is fifteen million, regardless of, of which is assessable value is higher or tax rate is higher. So, but, but I will say that's, that's a challenge and the school board won't be under any obligation, for instance, to, to do what we do. Um, and, and certainly they have the, you know, the, how fifty to fifty-one percent of the total tax bill that residents in the city of Augsburg is to schools. So we're certainly going to have to work with them and convince them that, uh, they've got to adjust their, their tax rate accordingly based on the higher assessable values. Or mayor, you're exactly right. Uh, again, higher property values with current tax rates certainly do mean more tax, no question. So I, I certainly have not gotten any indication from city council that we, we would not be following the value up we would be, we would be looking to, to maintain because that also will assist us in creating that gap that we desperately need, uh, in the constitutional tax limit. I mean, the tax limit is, is closing in on us when tax rates going up and property values are going down or staying the same. The good news now is if we're looking at decreasing tax rates and property assessments are going up, it's helping us create that, that gap. So it's, it's, it would be good news on all fronts to see the assessable value, value climb from a, a govern, governing taxing perspective, but certainly it's a, a good, uh, indicator that our community as well, that our property values are on the rise and that we're seeing so many, so many sales so rapidly, so.
So a couple of years ago, we talked about doing this, uh, and I think the county was going to help us. Is there any word with the county about doing this, that we don't have to do an independent contractor?
I don't think so. So, I mean, the county does no assessment services right now. I mean, the fact that they hired our, our chief assessor, um, but they, the county provides no assessment services anywhere right now and isn't signaling or indicating that they intend to get in that business. It's still the responsibility of the towns, um, the city. So, uh, certainly we'll talk to them as this process moves forward. Uh, Bruce and I have talked about it. He knows it's something we're, you know, we're looking at doing, uh, but I don't, I don't, I don't believe so. And this is, um, this is about a quarter million dollar, uh, proposition, uh, from, from start to finish, uh, two fifty to three hundred, I would say, is, is what it will cost the city to, uh, to execute through this.
Remember Bruce Green talking about this right here in this room when he was working